Calling the meeting of August 8th with the Willits City Council to order at 6:30. And we will start with a pledge to the flag.
Should we stand or no?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Kathy, would you like to just call?
Ms. Powers Gonzalez.
Here.
Warrenstein.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mayor Strong. Here. So, good. We've been right along. First item on our agenda is public communication. So, we welcome participation of the public. And comments are limited to three minutes per person. If there's a huge number of people, we might ask you to group your comments. And it's limited to matters that are not on the agenda but are within the jurisdiction of the city. And public criticism of city council, commissions, boards, and agencies is not prohibited, but no action is taken on any things that come up here because it has to be on an agenda. So this is for items not on the agenda. If you have anything you'd like to address the city council, please step up to the microphone.
If you don't have any takeaways, I'd like to be a public for a minute.
Okay.
Great.
At the last council meeting, during the public session, we had a citizen stand up and talk to us about a hazardous condition near her home on Bechtel Road. And I pass by that corner every day, and I notice that at some point there are traffic pylons that someone put there. You know, these big orange cylinder things that had put them there, and now they're gone. But I understand that her concern that she brought up to the council, and I wanted to get into a discussion, I felt that because of the fact that we couldn't comment on her comments, that she may have felt that she was being ignored. And what I'd like to ask is, if the city is aware of the situation, and if there's anything that can be done about it, because it is a, I could describe it to you, you know, if I'm allowed to. I'm looking at you, Jim.
Well, we typically don't respond to public.
Okay, okay, okay. It's where Bechtel Road comes in off of Main, off of North Main Street. You have that short turn, a short straight section down near where Shell Lane comes in, and then it makes almost a 90-degree right turn, and for the long arc that goes past the senior center. Now, at that point, and like I say, I drive it every day, and I'm looking at four people who probably drive it every day as well, you're tempted to cut the corner. And there were people, you know, they parked their cars on their houses right across the street. It's a, it's a dangerous situation. And when I saw those pylons, I don't know where they got them from, they probably stole them from Caltrans, but they were effective. You know, drivers come down, and they see that, and they go wide, they stay in the lane. So it's something that can be fixed fairly simply, and I'm just, I would like for the city to take a look at that, and, you know, just see what can be done.
Okay. It's appropriate for staff to take action based on public comment, and so it's something to look into, essentially.
Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah, please.
I'm sorry, Jerry, I interrupt you. So, we've been working, since I heard that, we've been working on it, and we haven't found any violators, but we're, soon we're going to have a traffic safety committee meeting, and that's going to be brought up to the super senate.
Okay. Again, I'm not proposing, you know, that a solution should be imposed, but, you know, whenever a citizen comes up and speaks to us, and we sit here stony-faced, even though we explain very clearly that we can't do anything, I sometimes feel like we're letting the public down.
We have a good response.
Yeah, I think that's good to refer to public safety. I say that if it's a, if the small thing that we can easily take care of, that's something that we would do.
Yeah.
If it's something, you need to re-engineer this intersection, obviously, that's not something that staff can do.
Of course.
And so I guess it's a good reminder, in sort of to know when we can act and when we can't. I, to me, it was an intersection issue, therefore, it's a larger public safety issue. But I think that's a perfect thing for a traffic safety committee, you can put that on the agenda for that. When will our next traffic safety meeting, Chief Hornet?
Do you know when that next meeting?
We haven't scheduled it. It's up to me to schedule it, and I have been remiss.
Okay. Jerry, did you have a comment?
No.
All right. We are now going to go to public matters. First item is presentation and discussion regarding a potential name change on the Frank R. Howard Memorial Hospital. I'd like to tell. So Stephanie, did you want to introduce this?
Yes, this is a presentation. We were asked by members of the Howard Foundation Hospital, or the Howard, I'm sorry.
Frank R. Howard.
Frank R. Howard Foundation, that they would like to speak to this issue, so we invited them to come and speak on it. And so I would like to introduce.
So where do I go?
Right here at the podium, and you may.
Bear in mind that that does not actually amplify the room. It's for the benefit of our TV viewers and record.
Okay. So, who are you? Particular format? Any questions?
I think, could you, so could you give some history? Because what we don't, our question, I think members of the public came and asked a question. They were concerned that the hospital was going to remove the name of the Howard family from the name of the hospital, and so there was some concern about that. And when our city clerk sort of required further, she realized that there's more to that story.
Yeah.
And it was probably better explained by you than by staff. So we would appreciate sort of explaining how that name change is coming about and why, and a little bit more about it.
Introduce yourself.
I'll do my best. I'm Arnie Mello. I'm the executive director at the Frank R. Howard Foundation. And this is, this is actually still evolving. You know, it's been kind of a long process. It started a little over a year ago. Adventist Health is in the process of rebranding their hospitals, which, you know, they've got a number of them throughout California and Hawaii. And they came to us with some proposed changes, which initially we weren't overly excited about. But we heard them out, and we've had ongoing discussions with them about what we could do to make sure that the foundation, and particularly the Howard family's memory is not forgotten, and still try and accommodate their plans for their marketing efforts. So, we, you know, there's, there were several iterations of the name change. Obviously, it used to be Frank R. Howard Memorial Hospital. That's what it's always been. And initially, the plan was to change the, to change it to Adventist Health, Frank R. Howard Memorial, leaving the word "hospital" off. And so, you know, we've always, you know, it's HMH, it's Howard Memorial Hospital. That's what we have always referred to it as. And we pushed back a bit, and at one point, there was the suggestion that maybe we might want to consider memorializing the family name rather than Frank. And kind of the thinking behind that is, and this hap, you know, this happens often over time. It's been almost 100 years. And, you know, when, when Charles initially gave us the money and built the hospital, he wanted to be sure his son was not forgotten. And, and so, but what, but what has happened over time is that, you know, he didn't just give us the money and walk away. He didn't just build the hospital and walk away. He continued to shepherd the management of this hospital throughout his lifetime. The Howard family ran the hospital until his death. And then his wife, Marcella, stayed in the game for a long time after that. She was on the board, and they actively managed the hospital. And not only that, the family gave additional monies to the hospital. When the Tubercular Hospital in Oakland closed, the assets from that hospital were given in the form of a separate foundation to the hospital, and those assets remained with the foundation. So, when the family heard this, they actually thought it might be time to not only memorialize Frank, but to memorialize Charles and Marcella and all the, you know, the 30 years that they put into making sure that we had a top-notch healthcare facility here. So, the Howard family is the one that made the decision to shorten it to Howard Memorial. We stuck to our guns, and we wanted the word "hospital" on the hospital. And Adventist Health relented. And so, what you see up there now is temporary, there's a folder down there. This is what it's gonna look like. This is from the, can I, from far away, this isn't gonna look like much, but that's what it's gonna look like on the side of the hospital when they're done. Which, you know, they should wrap it up.
Soon.
Yeah, should be a few months, maybe, you know, I'm expecting by the end of the year. So, their promotional materials and everything are gonna say Adventist Health, Howard Memorial. The Howard Memorial Hospital's are gonna be on the side of our building, and it's the only, hospitals are trying to get away from using the word "hospital", so, yeah, I know. So, it's, we will be the only hospital in their system that has the word "hospital" on the building. And, and so, we're a few months out from the signage getting changed, but that's kind of how we got from there to here. We didn't, you know, we moved slowly. We included the Howard family, and I think everybody is happy with, with the arrangement we ended up with. We are, the Howard Foundation has always had the trademark Frank R. Howard Memorial Hospital, and we applied for almost a year ago, and recently received within the last couple of months a trademark for Howard Memorial Hospital. So, we retain that, and the HMH emblem is already on the building, and when we answer the phones, it's Howard Memorial Hospital. And so, unless you guys have questions.
Would it be okay to pass that around, so that those in the audience could see that as well?
Yeah.
Ron.
You know, this is kind of a weird situation, because, you know, we're imposing ourselves into what could be viewed as a private matter between the foundation and Adventist. But as you're well aware, and I think many people are well aware, this is our hospital.
Yeah, it is.
It's not just the Howard family. This is ours. And, and, you know, there have been, you know, to build a new hospital, the city, the citizens of this community raised, I believe, about $4 million in fundraisers, and the city directed $4 million towards it as well.
Right.
So, you know, we have a, we have a pretty heavy real stake in this hospital, and we kind of take it personally when someone wants to mess with it.
Yeah, no, I know.
So, I mean, that's, that's the thing. But I like the design. I mean, that's, that's pretty clear what this is.
Yeah.
I guess the other concern that some of us have is that, you know, Howard Memorial Hospital is this one thing. Adventist was brought in by the foundation, I believe, in the 1980s.
'86.
To run, to run the hospital.
Yes.
They were invited in, and now, because of circumstances, they own the hospital.
No, they don't.
The building.
So, let me explain, let me, let me expand on that a little bit. We did bring them back, we did bring them in in '86, because we were having trouble running it ourselves.
Yeah.
And, and so, they ran with it until, you know, we kept renewing the lease, and they ran with it until 2015, or I'm sorry, until 2010, when we signed a new contract with them. As many of you know, we tried to, we tried to build the hospital on our own, and we, we couldn't do it. And so, the truth is, we wouldn't have what we have today without Adventist Health. And Adventist Health could not have built the hospital without us. So, it's a partnership. The hospital is actually a 50-year leasehold improvement.
Right.
The foundation still owns the land. We are seven years into that contract, and in 43 years, I won't be here. But there's some people in this room that might actually be around when that hospital comes back to the foundation. So, they don't own it. They, they own the improvements, and we do have a contract with them to run it. I will say, we are the envy of every small community in this country, because we have something that they would like for themselves. So, I think the partnership has worked, and I think it's gonna work going forward.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's good to hear, because you hear stories. And it's a little disturbing at times, but, and again, it's more like the, the local Howard family versus this big corporate hospital. And I, I understand what you said, because I did a lot of research on this several years ago. And I know, you know, the history of it, and I certainly do appreciate the value of Adventist, especially recently stepping forward and putting up the money to build a new hospital. We would not have a hospital if they hadn't done that. And I think it's pretty safe to say we would not have a hospital in this town if they had not done that, because that old hospital had to be abandoned.
We couldn't still be in there, right.
Right. So, you know, I personally thank Adventist for their intervention, and they're my neighbor. And I see them every day, and I listen to their helicopters, and I love it. But, you know, that was just a thing. And so I'm happy that you came here and clarified this, because it makes a lot of sense now.
Jerry.
Arnie, you were very eloquent in this, and I really appreciate you wrapping that. I also noticed we have some folks from Adventist. Did you guys want to speak today, or do you think, Arnie?
Yeah, actually, we're here in case anybody had a question specific to Adventist.
Oh, it looked like you guys came as a team, but I figured I.
No, we just thought maybe somebody from the hospital should be here in case a question came up that I couldn't answer.
I want to come in. We have a member, Warrenstein, did nail it well. This is Willits' hospital, and that's a mutual understanding. And I was happy to be a member of this community as well.
All right. I just want to make sure that, it looked like you guys came as a team, but I wanted to acknowledge that they were in the audience. And I gotta tell you, I was born at the old Howard Hospital, so hopefully I won't end up in the old one on my way out. So, I'll definitely say, not pass.
So, Prina?
I'm really pleased with the compromise that you came up with, and I know that change is hard.
Yeah.
But I'm very grateful that Adventist Health stepped up in our community and is here. And I think that, that maybe a little overdue, there's a little overdue thank you. Adventist Health, I'm not sure everybody is fully aware of all the things that, that they're doing for the community. I know that they sponsor a lot of local events, many different health fairs, just many, many things in our community. Not only are they health-driven, but just really a lot of outreach in our community. And so, that's appreciated.
And Prina, my bad, that they're one of our biggest employers in town, too.
Absolutely. And, and that, that has an impact on our local economy. And so, we're very pleased with the partnership between the Howard Foundation and the Adventist Health. It's an asset to our community.
I think so, too.
So, no other questions or comments? Or anyone in the audience want to address us on this? If not, well, thank you so much, all of you for coming, and it sounds like we are happy with how it's going.
And so, Madam Mayor, I am going to assume that you no longer, that the council would no longer like staff to draft any letters.
I believe that is the case, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to make it, yeah, we're still clear. We do not need another letter. We are happy with how the partnership is working. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is to establish fees for the use of the electric vehicle charging stations in the city parking lot between Mendocino Avenue and Wood Street. Dusty Dooley will speak for that. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Strong. Council members, Dusty Dooley, your city planner. This was a different project for me to work on, and it was, it was a nice change from, from the usual. This is in regards to the EV charging stations that were recently installed in our city parking lot in downtown area between Wood Street and Mendocino Avenue. All that's left to do is to establish fees, and we will let the software company know about that, and folks will be able to begin paying and using those charging stations. There's two dual-port, level-two EV charging stations. So, two stations, but four ports, so it's possible for four vehicles to charge at the same time. Again, these were installed and purchased using grant funds that were administered by the Mendocino Land Trust. There's a five-year warranty that comes with those, so all the service fees, any kind of software upgrades or issues, that's all covered under the, under the warranty. The electrical cost will be borne by the city. And so that's why staff is recommending that we do collect some funds to help offset the cost of electricity for, for the folks that are using these stations. You'll see here that the recommended fees are, there's a combination of, there's a 50-cent initial connection access fee that staff is recommending, beyond that, a 25-cent per kilowatt-hour fee, and then a $5 per hour fee that takes effect 30 minutes after the vehicle has completed charging. This was a learning experience for me. I, at first thought, well, are we doing an hour charge? Are we doing a kilowatt charge? I found out that depending on the vehicle that you have, it can suck up more electricity per hour than another one. So, for instance, Tesla's gonna use up more electricity in an hour than something like a Nissan Leaf. And so, by just strictly going with an hourly charge, the person who can take more, so it's, it's not quite completely fair in that sense. So, then the thought was, well, let's, let's go with a kilowatt-hour charge. And of course, depending on the time of day and the time of year, what PG&E charges is a little bit different. And 25 cents seemed to be about, about the average. But again, we don't know necessarily what, what time will be used and to what extent. But the, what became apparent with just going with the kilowatt hour is that if someone that takes on average two and a half hours to charge their vehicle, they could then leave that car sitting there for another six hours and take up the space. And so, we wanted to provide that incentive for them to move their vehicle once it was done charging. Therefore, you get the combination of the kilowatt hour to actually charge the, the actual electricity that's used to charge their vehicle. But then, we set the hourly fee, it's essentially a parking fee at that point, to get folks to go ahead and move their vehicle once they're done charging. The, I spoke to ChargePoint, who is the software company that, that runs these machines, and what, what staff is proposing is possible. So, once the vehicle is done charging, the person can get a text message on their phone letting them know that. And then 30 minutes after the charge has been complete, that's when the $5 an hour fee would, would begin. The $50 initial connection fee.
50 cents.
That's 50 cents. Thank you. All right, tried to sneak that in. We could've got some good money on that.
I'm joking to it.
Is to try to avoid people just using the parking space as a parking space. So, if the parking lot becomes full, and it becomes the only available parking space, I suppose you could park there, but you're gonna be expected to pay that initial fee. These, the, the purpose isn't to, for the city to make money off of the, of the actual charging stations, but rather to just recoup all, or at least a significant portion of our costs of providing the electricity and, and maintenance of the, the charging stations themselves. And, let's see. Yeah, you have an estimate from PG&E, as well as from the Mendocino Land Trust, that speaks to the estimated cost of electricity for these stations. I also just handed out a cost comparison that shows what other jurisdictions in the Bay Area are charging for their EV charging stations. I tried to find closer data and was unable to, but at least it gives you an idea of where our proposal is in relation to what some other jurisdictions are charging. And I should say that that data is a couple of years old, but I think it does show that we're, we're not far off in our estimate. And then, I guess, and then, you know, we will actually have real data as far as money coming in and costs going out. And so, we very well could be back in front of the council in the near future, adjusting those, those fees to either slightly recoup, or if we overestimated, you know, possibly decreasing the fees.
So, questions for Dusty before we open up the public hearing?
Yeah.
Jerry?
We advertised somehow, is there a way to get on some lists so people know that they're there, and then maybe a sign on Main Street to direct them up to the parking lot? Is that part of it?
Yeah, thank you. I actually meant to mention that, that it's in the report. It, I believe we have $500 through the grant to pay for signing, and that would go for, the signage probably actually at the stations themselves, noting the cost and whatnot. But I think it would be smart for us to do some wayward signage in the future, directing people to those stations. And yes, there are websites out there that people use to identify these stations, and, and we will be placed on those websites.
And I know, I know, so we, I guess, I know some people are digitally, I guess, look toward the web to point that.
Yeah. Well, we're also asking Caltrans if there's an opportunity to put one of those signs on the highway to alert people, and then possibly some additional wayfinding signage within town. So, that's probably something that our committee can, can talk about.
Okay.
Okay, so, technical questions. I like, I liked the plan as you laid it out, but I have a little, few concerns here. So, the 50-cent or $50 initial connection access fee, how is that recorded?
So, they, typically, you have an app on your phone, and you enter your credit card data into there. And then, when you go to start charging your vehicle, you, apparently your phone talks to the station. And at that point, you're gonna get charged an initial 50 cents right off the bat, and then it'll immediately start measuring the electricity that's being used, and you'll be charged at, at whatever rate the council decides on.
Okay.
25 cents is what we have recommended.
Okay. So, if you don't have an app on your phone, I don't have data planned on my phone, so I would just be standing there looking cross-eyed at it. Would you insert a credit card into the kiosk?
There is, I think it's a, it's called a, it's like a ChargePoint card that you can load funds onto.
Do you do what to?
It's, the, the company has a card that you can load funds onto like a credit card.
Oh, like a debit card, sort of thing?
Yeah.
If you buy one of those cards, they, they give you that information, too.
Okay. So, basically, I couldn't just drive up to this, this thing here, you know, and just plug in my, my electric car that I don't have. And I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have this card, you know, if I don't have an app on my phone, I can't, I can't get electricity. And if I don't have this, this card that you're talking about, I can't charge that. Is that, is that the way it works?
That's my understanding. Those are the two options that you have, yeah. So, you can't insert cash, or just slide your regular credit card, or?
Yeah. See, I assumed it was a credit card kind of a thing, like, like parking meters in the city do. I mean, wouldn't it be better to have that kind of a situation, because not everybody, I mean, I know personally some people who don't even have a smartphone. And that would be, that could be, you know, an impediment. So, I don't know, I mean.
I'll ask if there's a cheap option to add that convenience to the.
Okay. So, the other thing is, having gotten past that, so now, if somebody pulls up into this spot, and suppose they just parked their car and they walk away, you don't know they're there. All right.
We sound pleased to hear this.
Okay. So, they're gonna get a ticket. But what is the reality of, I mean, do you have enough patrols? I mean, how many parking?
We have, we have a community service officer, who that's one of his main things to do is to write parking signs.
So, the likelihood of this being patrolled on a regular basis is pretty high?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, that.
Not guaranteeing every day.
No, of course.
Not guaranteeing every day, every hour of the day, but yes.
Okay. So then, that brings me to the 50 cents. And it seems to me that somebody could park for free in that spot for 50 cents for half an hour. Or, actually, I'm sorry, because I was thinking the half an hour because that's when the $5 an hour thing kicks in, you know, assuming that they skipped this little detail about getting their car charged.
Let's say their vehicle's pretty much fully charged and they go and park there to avoid our police force from busting them. They're going to have to start charging and they're going to get charged 50 cents. If they're at a full charge, they got about a half an hour until they start getting $5 an hour.
Okay, because I was thinking that the 50 cents might not be enough of a preventative measure to keep someone from using it as a parking space for a period of time. And I'm thinking that, would it be possible, and I'm looking at some of these other ones, the access fees of, well, there's only like a couple here, one as high as $4. If we were to impose a higher fee that would discourage someone from using it as a 50 cent parking place, that would be, you know, credited back to their account after they finish charging, you know, that kind of thing. But it would prevent any casual parker from just using that spot and walking away and, you know, parking. So I don't know if that's something you want to consider.
And I'm not sure, I'd have to ask ChargePoint if that's even something that they can set up where essentially you have a deposit and then provided you really do charge, it gets refunded to you. I don't know if that's an available option.
Okay, but if they, I mean, that's where, and when I was thinking credit card, I knew it could be done that way.
At the moment, I don't think this is a big concern for the city, but hopefully as time goes on, there is going to be a way higher demand for downtown parking. And part of even putting this in here was just to sort of get something there and set. But I think you're right, as it became more of an issue, we'd be looking to either up that fee and then maybe some sort of, you know, considering it really just a deposit and then being able to reimburse the person after they're done charging if everything's followed correctly would be a, you know, a fair solution.
And it's not the kind of thing that you have to nail down from day one, you know, you're going to play with it, and I get that. I like the idea of the fees not being exorbitant because the longer the car stays in that parking lot, the likely, and I believe I read in the report somewhere that some cars take two to three hours to charge. So that means for two or three hours, they're going to be wandering your streets of downtown. And that's good. So we don't want to prevent them from doing that. But there is that balance point.
So, oh, um-
I just wanted to point out that in order for us to decide, we have to have a resolution from you guys. So, I'm aware of that.
Okay, Suprina?
I just wanted to share some observations. In Ukiah, in the conference center, I frequent that parking lot often and they have charging stations there. And rarely do I see a car sit there all day. You see cars come and go. So just sharing that they don't appear to have a problem. With that said, I also live on Mendocino Avenue and the parking lot right there off of Wood and Mendocino Avenue, it's rarely ever full on a normal day. I've never, ever had a problem finding a parking space there. And there's plenty of other places to park, so I can't imagine that somebody would choose to sit in a spot without charging when we have plenty of on-street parking as well as a parking lot and other places you could park without inconveniencing somebody or incurring a potential violation. Um, let's see, so the average time for a charge, are you thinking that's about two hours?
In talking to local jurisdictions, it's about two and a half hours. According to ChargePoint, I talked to the person who's in charge of North America and apparently the countrywide, it's two hours and 11 minutes.
Okay.
But then there's some vehicles apparently that can take up to four hours to charge. Those are probably some of the older models, I'm assuming. But it's been a learning experience for me, yeah.
Do you know what the shortest time is? Just by chance?
I don't.
Okay, that's all right.
If the average is two hours and 11 minutes, there's probably-
Teslas are the ones that-
Yeah.
And the only reason-
I don't know if that's considering like fast chargers as well, or if that's an average just based on the types that we have. I don't have that.
The only reason that I ask is because, let's say that there's charges in 45 minutes. I wouldn't want them to park there, go to lunch, be in the middle of lunch, and not be able to take care of their business because they're worried that we have a $5 charge. So I just wanted some, I think two hours is a very reasonable amount of time to park and eat lunch or whatever you need to do.
Yeah, I don't think there's any scenario, unless someone's got three-quarter charge and they're just barely needing a charge or something, but typically someone's going to be able to eat lunch, they're at least going to get a half an hour break from that. Yeah.
Okay. And then I noticed, I didn't see Ukiah on the list. Did I miss that? For their rates?
The information was pulled from the Bay Area Climate Collaborative back in 2015.
Okay.
So I didn't have Ukiah on there.
Yeah, I was curious.
I did search for some more local data and did find some websites where identified, and when I clicked on them, it said price is unknown. So I was anxious to get you some more Fort Bragg and local data.
Okay. And then my last one is just a comment that most people I know that are using the electric car charging stations are finding them by using the app. And so before we spent money on signage, I would hope that we would make sure that that was like our first priority. That's my preference because I, that seems to be how people are finding the charging stations.
My understanding is as soon as we set the rates and those would take effect immediately, correct? And I would then alert ChargePoint of that. They would program that into the machine and then we'd immediately be on their national website.
Okay.
And then we will figure out how to get on the other common websites so that folks are aware of them. So I believe that's a free service and it happens almost instantly.
And then if we approve their rates tonight, will the stations be up and running by the 17th of this month?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, they're up and running now.
Well, we don't have any, oh, without fees?
The escalation fee is that-
I got a thank you from somebody and was surprised to know that.
Is the escalation fee referred to if you leave your car parked there after it's charged? Is that what that is?
Right, so provided, once your car is done charging, you get a text, as long as you get there within a half an hour, you will not be charged anything else. But after that, it starts at $5 an hour.
Okay. All right, so thank you. And if anyone in the public would like to address the council on this agenda item regarding EV charging station fees, seeing nobody, bring it back up here and ask for a motion.
We make a motion to move staff's recommendation and approve of the resolution.
And shall we add to the effect that parking there without following these-
That's a resolution.
That's a separate resolution.
Separate resolution?
Needs to be drawn up.
And I'll second Jerry's motion.
Okay, so basically, it's staff recommendation.
I think once we get our track history and see what's happening, there might not be a need for, we also don't allow parking there overnight, so.
Okay, so moved and seconded. And any other questions or comments?
Yeah, so I just want to clarify, as we talked about the fees, obviously, if we adopt this resolution, these fees will be adopted, but are you going to continue to, is it implied in the resolution that you're going to be constantly reviewing the fees to see if they need to go up or down or?
Right, so we'll be keeping track of the electrical bills and any other associated fees. There's a fund that's been identified that those will go into. And then ChargePoint will send us a check every month and we'll, you know, let that go on for a little while and we'll be back in front of you if we need to modify those.
Okay.
Again, we're not trying to make money, but we're not trying to lose a lot of it, right?
Right. Appreciate that.
So I believe we should have a roll call on, I already asked for a public comment.
Yeah.
Oh, I missed it.
Okay, so roll call, please.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Warren Stieck?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes. All right. So we're now, we have no ordinances to enact, so we're skipping that. Consent calendar is on June 13th and July 25th. Do we have both of those?
No, we do not.
We have just the-
July 25th, they're being polled.
Okay, so we have just the June 13th council minutes and dispersment journals. I think we actually had to approve dispersment journals.
Yes.
But anyway, they're on there. So, any item need be polled, otherwise we will-
We'll pull on July 25th.
Yes, the July 25th minute.
So I move the consent calendar.
And I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. And if anyone wish to address us on this? And if not, I think we can just take a voice, all those in favor, say hi.
Hi.
Hi, thank you. Informational reports, we have the building inspection activity reports, and we'll get a report from our building inspector later, so we'll move on to, there's no, well, just so you know, there is a right to appeal from decisions of the city council. Generally limited to 90 days and have to look up the statutes. We're going to go to adjourn a city council and meet as the city planning commission. And we have two items as the city planning commission.
But you're still working on the planning?
Work.
So you may remember me here. No, she's not.
She did a good job by working on these, these two.
Good. I will let her know that you said that.
Agreed. So why don't you go ahead?
Very good. So this is a request from the proprietor, Mr. Bob Ing. He's looking to, for council approval, or planning commission approval of a use permit to convert an existing 2020 square foot building that was previously used to support a restaurant. And he'd like to convert it into a mixed use, a live-work unit consisting of a 1,180 square foot, one-bedroom, single-family residence, and the remaining 840 square foot would be retained as a commercial space currently proposed as an office space. The property is on the west side of Highway 101, located at 1482 South Main Street. The applicant's plans that he submitted notes North Main Street, but I promise it's South Main Street. There's a number of existing improvements that are located on the property beyond the existing 2020 square foot building. Those are noted in the staff report. There's two two-bedroom units, four one-bedroom duplexes, garage, and a number of existing parking spaces. The property's owned heavy commercial C2, and it does allow for a single-family home, provided that's an accessory to a permitted commercial unit. That is what is being proposed with the mixed-use building. We do have condition number one that states essentially that the commercial portion of the building must remain as a commercial component, cannot be converted to a single, further residential space, and rather the, the single-family resident needs to remain incidental to that use. The only other key issue that was noted in the report had to do with parking. And I need to, I need to make a correction to that. In further looking at the project, it is all on one legal parcel, therefore only one ADA parking spot is required based on the California Uniform Building Code. And so it does require a total of 21 parking spaces and one ADA man-accessible parking space for a total of 22, but not 23 as noted in the staff report. And so should the council, or should the commission approve the project, staff would request that, condition number two says the applicant must submit a revised parking plan that includes 21 parking spaces, two ADA spaces, and one ADA van. We can strike the two ADA spaces as those are not required by our code. And we actually do have a parking plan. We'll believe the condition as is, but the parking plan that was provided by the applicant and the application is adequate and does meet our parking code requirements. And happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay, clarify something for me here. This is one parcel, and the entire parcel that includes the existing dwellings, everything is owned commercial, but because the restaurant was there, that is what allowed the living spaces to be on that property?
So those existing residences on the property are considered legal non-conforming uses.
Okay.
So they presumably predated the zoning limitations.
Grandfathered them.
Yeah, so this use permit is only reviewing the request for the additional single-family residents, which is allowed with the use permit provided they maintain a commercial requirement.
Okay, so what you're saying, I just want to make sure I understand, is that because in the past, when this was set up, there was no, what do you call it, exception or permitted use?
Zoning code didn't disallow it.
Okay, it didn't have, it didn't matter that there was a restaurant there or not. This is what it was. So, not that I'm objecting to anything here, but in your report, you're making very clear that the restaurant, which will, or part of the restaurant, the major part of the restaurant, about 1,100, about 1,000 square feet roughly, still has to, I'm sorry, the 800 square foot portion that is going to become the office has to be there. And the 1,000 square feet or whatever cannot expand into that space. They have to be distinct. But is that necessary, given the fact that the property in a commercial zone, you know, the grandfather thing here already has 90% of it is living space? So, I mean, you see what I'm saying? There seems to be a, maybe a contradiction here?
Yeah, when you bring the context, the entire property, it, you know, the residential component is overwhelming of the commercial space and wouldn't likely meet the intent of the current zoning code. And so staff's looking at it as that existed, that predates the current zoning restrictions. So in looking at just the individual building-
So it's not a thing of you looking at and saying, well, it's already there, so we don't have to, you know, we can go along with it, we can make it all residential. That's not the issue because of-
The current code-
The current code would supersede what exists?
He's trying-
The current building is subject to the current code and-
Okay, if they didn't, if they didn't do anything with that building, then they wouldn't even, well, obviously we wouldn't be here.
Right.
Okay, okay, I get you.
Any other questions for Dusty before we open up the hearing?
Yeah, just, it's because he's changing that particular building that the current code applies, correct?
Right.
Yes.
So for instance, if he was to remove those existing residential structures and not come in for building permits within a year, he would lose that non-conforming status and would not be able to rebuild those in a current zone.
I, I'm familiar with the property. I know that there's businesses on either side of you and there's residential space. And knowing that space, I think that that seems like a very suitable place, so.
So, okay, so does anyone in the audience want to address the planning commission on this item? And seeing no one, we've already had some questions. Is there any other discussion or shall we have a motion?
I'll move that we approved the, what are we approving?
I'll second.
The thing.
The staff recommendation as revised by Dusty on the question of the parking. And it's been seconded. All right, I think we need a voice, a roll call on this.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Warren Stieck?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Strong?
Yes. Great, Dusty, you're up again. So the next item is another conditional use permit. This one is for Wayne Fisher. So go ahead.
This is use permit U-1805. This is a request from 44AU Corporation to allow for the construction of two two-story duplexes, a total of four residential units on a property that's approximately 0.32 acres. A little bit of clarification, Wayne is acting as the agent for the project and isn't really necessarily a applicant, although that's what was shown on the actual application Anyways, that's just a formality. The, the property's owned community commercial C1, and our zoning code does allow for group residential upon obtaining a use permit. Duplexes are also allowed, but because there's two sets of duplexes and therefore a four-unit that falls under our group residential use type, which again, is allowed upon approval of a use permit from the council. There is an old wood shop structure on the property and maybe some trailers that are being stored there. Those are all being proposed to be removed to support the project. The properties on the west side of Central Avenue- The, the properties on the west side of Central Avenue intersecting with Monroe in the north and Alameda Avenue on the south, so it's got street frontage on three sides. Access is proposed off of Monroe and Alameda Avenue to serve the new residences. A couple issues of note, or, or just additional constraints on the property, is both in the aquaspril fault zone and within the floodplain as mapped by FEMA. And, and what that means is, is prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant's gonna need to have a geotechnical report done that'll recommend location of building as well as those, any additional requirements for construction. This is, this is a state law that, that's applicable whether I have a condition in this report or not. Obviously, our building officials quite familiar. A portion of the property is also within the floodplain. Anytime you're developing in the floodplain, you have to get what's called a floodplain development permit prior to issuance of a building permit, and that's to ensure that the base of the structure is above the base flood elevation. So these are just some additional constraints to development, but wouldn't anticipate that defeating the, the actual construction of the buildings. This, we have both of these constraints throughout our city and folks are all too familiar with them. But other than that, staff reviewed the project and, and found no issues.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, sir. Jury?
The, I guess, with the parking on the Alameda side being driveways on-site, or will they be, okay, so there'd be, you know, on-street parking per se there? It just seems like Alameda's really narrow, that's why I was wondering.
Yeah, the development's required to provide a total of eight parking places, and you've got...
Four.
Four, eight total.
Okay, that was it.
Okay, and...
So, just for the record, I, I've passed by that, that lot for many, many years, and whenever I drive down that street, I say to myself, "When the hell is somebody gonna do something with this property?" So, thank you, thank you. And, and I have to say, did you design this, Wayne?
Yes, I did.
Your name is on the, the thing here, I, I blew it up to take a look. You do a good job.
Thank you.
These are, these are beautiful. So just, just to understand what we're, we have here, you have each, each duplex is twenty-four hundred square foot footprint, and it looks like each, each section will be roughly about eighteen hundred square feet, including the garage, is that about right?
Living area is eleven hundred sixty square feet per unit, which I have a three-bedroom, two-bath, and that amount of space, and the garage is basically fourteen by thirteen feet. It does have a portion of dryer utility space and a HVAC unit near the garage area, so it was a pretty tight design to get living space in a, in a small area, trying to meet the setbacks that would be required in a residential zone, so that, you know, in a commercial zone typically you don't really have to have setbacks come popularly, so we're trying to design this as a, as a residential zone parcel with twenty-foot setbacks.
Well, well, actually, that, that's a good thing, because there's, I think the apartment building across the street didn't have any kind of space around it, it's very tight. I see you have like a ten-foot space on the sides, you know, I mean, you need a yard of some kind for kids to play in, and it looks like you provided it here. So that, that's whatever you could.
It takes a lot of cooperation from the client and the owners, too, and I'd just like to introduce Mark Lemonfeld and Danny Malik and their, their spouses, but they are the forty-four AU Corporation, so if you look at the backboard, everybody on the right is your people, everybody on the left here is my people. I'm sure you're familiar with, with everybody in the backboard. I'm not your people, too, Wayne, but everybody.
Okay. It's a nice-looking project, and, and I congratulate you for it.
I, I just hope you act favorably upon this resolution tonight, we're not, we don't have any questions about the conditions of approval, we've already contacted Lakeport on the geotech work, I've contacted Sam Pope to do the elevation for the floodplain work and design all of the crew better sidewalk renovations to city spec, so we're ready to go.
Good.
Is that it? Barry, you have a question?
I agree, it looks good. Are these gonna be rentals? Just confirming, yes. And then in the plans, are you gonna have fencing around the yards?
Because of the setbacks and the site distance on all four of those corners, I think we've discussed that the private area in between the two, the back-to-back, so to speak, we're gonna go ahead and concrete that so that the people have places easy to clean, it's more of a common space, and privacy fenced that as it faces central, but that will be the extent of the fence.
Okay.
And, okay, I don't know if I already asked, but if I didn't, does anyone else from the public wish to address us on this conditional use permit? And seeing nobody, I think we have...
We can motion and move staff recommendations and approval.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, and we'll have another, we'll call on that.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yep.
Warren Stee?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Merschel?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good, good work. City manager report?
Okay, I just have a few things. I wanted to start out by...
Can you try to take it outdoors to, or have it in the hall, please?
I wanted to thank our, our new airport managers, Kathy and Bill Wilson and Kathy Borinett, who have been managing the airport. Some sort of exciting things have been going on with the airport for the last week and a half. We were able to, we're very grateful to be able to be helping with the fire effort. We were asked to be the site for various helicopters aiding the Mendocino complex fires, not just Reach, but helicopters and teams from all over the state, from different states, actually, people from Texas, and even we even had a crew from New Zealand who are using our airport as a, as a ground to, to use airports from, and, and we're very proud of that. Some of the advantages of the Willets Airport is that we're at a, at an elevation of almost two thousand feet, which makes it very convenient for helicopters, and it allows them to save fuel without having to go down to the level of the Kaya Airport, which is much lower. So we've been working to refuel their vehicles, give them water. The crews there are delighted, actually, to be on our, on our grounds because we've got showers, it's very comfortable, and they, they like to be near Willets because there's good food there and places to stay, and, and so we've just gotten a lot of good feedback from, from that effort. Officially, we issued a NOTAM report, and with that, it's a notice to airmen, basically closing the airport for this emergency operation, and we were working very closely with the Department of Transportation and Galtrans. Christopher Brooks is our contact there, and he's been very appreciative and very cooperative, and he thinks it's great that we're doing this, and, and so he's been working with us, and I'm...
You're aware, I assume, that back in oh-eight, they did the same thing for the lightning fires up north?
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, it was really jam-packed with helicopters, so it was, it's a good tradition we're getting into here.
It's a very good tradition, and we have some really cool aircraft there, too. We've got Sky Cranes, Chinooks, and Hueys.
Yeah.
And so apparently those are really big, cool helicopters, there's something to see. We have six today, there's another six coming tomorrow, it's really something to see those. And I also wanted to, I know we wanted to show our appreciation also to the Brook Trails Community Service District and the Brook Trails Fire Department for their cooperation in this effort as well, so I just wanted to let you guys know this is going on.
Quick question.
Sure.
I know we have one source of fuel up there, and, and aircrafts use different types of fuel, are we, are we able to serve everybody's needs? Did we bring in some other form of fuel so that...
We've been trucking fuel in, actually, we, I don't know if you've seen the tankers?
Why, they're thinking about that, wondering how we're solving that problem, so could you elaborate maybe a little?
I'm gonna let Kathy give you the details.
Actually, I'm sorry, Bill is...
Bill is, Bill's the fuel guy, he loves, he's a bit, but I do know that they bring in whatever fuel they need, we've been bringing in, and we actually sell the fuel, and we get, make a little bit of money on that, which is nice.
So they're not bringing their own fuel?
No, we, we supply.
Yeah, if we could get a little bit of updates, we can share information, that would be great.
Sure. So, but yeah, no, we, we provide it all. We also, you know, in the future, we would very much like to provide ongoing fuel for Reach helicopters and, and higher-quality fuel. That is a goal for us in our airport, is to make sure that we've got that special fuel for Reach helicopters, and so we're most...
We're getting it down.
We're getting it down, we're, we're happy about that. I met with our county services, who was our sales tax consultant, and they give us reports on sales tax. And the last time I reported to you on this, it looked like twenty seventeen, calendar year, our sales tax would be down approximately six percent, which is quite a bit less than our projected loss of fifteen to twenty percent. Turns out that the end of the day, after all the numbers came in, actually, two thousand seventeen, we were only down three point six percent, which is great news. So far, because from our first quarter reports, they are projecting that this year we're going to be down only point seven percent. Point seven percent. And next year, they are projecting an increase of one point five percent, and actually for the following two years. So the future is bright in Willets.
Maybe we can stop protesting against the bypass, full moratorium.
Wanted to also let you, let folks know, if you didn't know, that the, we had a power outage to, a weekend before the last weekend, which fried our computers, and we were down for a couple of days. Our hard drive failed, we are now working off of a virtual server provided by, provided by the county. So it's been a little touch and go in terms of us being able to be communicative, but the county actually was very responsive and fixed us up and patched us in, and that was really great. But we are gonna need to get a new server because it fried.
Don't we have some sort of a surge protector or USB or something?
It, it was more than that, it was, and I couldn't tell you the technical words for it, but first our, our entire power source blew out, and the power source blew out within the computer, there's actually an additional power source that just blew up, and she knows I'm talking about. And then the entire server, which is, our server was old. You know, so we're actually gonna get a refurbished server. Not only is it cheaper, but they say because it's older, it's better, and we can put more for, more information on it, which I love that.
Yeah, I've always believed that older is better.
Right, me too. So, but we're working on that, so we're, everything got put back a little bit. Our poor finance interim finance director worked all weekend and then lost all of her work, and that was very difficult for her, because as you know, this is budget time, and she's been working incredibly hard, and she lost a bunch of work. And so we are still shooting for our original deadlines, and we're gonna try to, we're shooting for, gonna try, but we, but she had a significant setback in spending a lot of weekends at the, at the old office.
If you're not ready, will we still continue with the twenty-first, or will we...
We're trying. We, we are, we are trying, until further notice, we're doing the twenty-first.
And if we're not ready, you'll notify us?
Yeah.
We won't, yeah.
Yeah, no, we're, I, I ask her every day, she was actually in pretty good shape, we had a good conversation last night about it, and I, I am totally optimistic.
What are we expecting the hours to be?
A morning, we're looking at, at, starting at nine o'clock, and hopefully it won't take too long. But listen, and also I want to say that we talked about the EV charging station, we are having a ribbon-cutting August seventeenth, five o'clock, that's next Friday, and very excited about that. And that's on, five o'clock.
Hey, that's...
That's it for me.
Already done? Ah, okay. And then we have administration, Steve Clark.
Yes, I have a couple things this evening. The pool season is going to be extended until November first. We're going to do lap swim from six AM to seven forty-five, Monday through Friday, and then from eight to ten on Saturdays. Water aerobics is going to come back on Tuesdays and Thursdays from five thirty to six thirty in the evening, and on Saturdays from nine to ten, so that's a good thing, to keep it up a little bit longer.
Can we just, I just wanted to ask that, that we ask our two papers to run that basically every week, to have a little, little, because they usually do it once, and then if you recycle that paper, you can't find it anymore. And I'm sure it's on the website, but like it in the paper.
Kathy, how's that with some of our staffing at school, how's that going to affect your lifeguard staffing?
Maddie has two lifeguards that are staying on, and the rest of them are going back to school. So that's where the hours are, to what we have. Nomination period ends this Friday at five PM. We have current, I have currently issued three packets, with one being returned, so we'll see what happens on Tuesday, Friday. And then last weekend, we had, of course, the fire started, and I was contacted by Doug, approached by Doug Reiter, the public works director from Lakeport, and he asked us to get a crew together. And I'll tell you what, these people, sorry, I always do this, these people at the city, all of us, I mean, it was amazing, I made phone calls to Bill Wilson and to Scott Herman, they were on it, they had a four-man crew in fifteen minutes, they called me back and said, "Tell us where we need to be and when we need to be." They sent, sent over Nikki Kalbuck, Daniel Curtis, both from the sewer department, Kurt Tifranco, and Darren Bowles from Public Works, and they were there twelve hours a day for seven days. And it was amazing, and I really want to thank them for going.
You know, I just want to note, Kathy, during our little incident where we had the fire in our surrounding area, Doug Reiter came here in the early hours to help out, offered his services and stuck around for a little bit.
That is wonderful. We were at, actually, at a wedding in New Mexico when this happened, his son and my son were both in this wedding, and he was on his phone, did his city, and I was on the phone up to our city, and everybody just pulled together, and it was wonderful how we can just all work like that. And Lakeport is so grateful that we were able to send crews over, and they took such good care of them. Crews were so funny, they were like, "We ate non-stop." So I just really appreciate our staff pulling together at the last minute and doing this.
And, and later we're gonna hear about our, we actually had police officers also who offered mutual aid, and Chief Warnock will report on that as well. Thank you, was that your?
That's my...
Okay, and finance, we've heard from you about human resources, Kathy?
No.
Okay, and legal?
I'll have a report for you in close session.
Okay. All right, public safety, Chief Warnock.
Wasn't gonna let Chris go first. Scott Warnock, chief of police. Power outage, just to let you know, when we had those two power outages, we doubled patrol, we called people in, and, until, till the power came back on. We, we had a mutual aid, we, first of all, we offered mutual aid to Lake County, and they said, they told us that it's being coordinated by Lima, which is the law enforcement mutual aid for Mendocino County, which is out of the sheriff's department. We received a request from Lima to supply officers for mutual aid, and we supplied four officers, two different shifts, each sixteen hours. It was only for a few days because a large agency south of here that's in Sonoma County that happens to be a sheriff's department, they were, there was a request for thirty units from them, and they supplied sixty. So that, that allowed the, the mutual aid to release the smaller departments that are a little more hurt from that. And I want to recognize the four officers, they volunteered for it, they worked on their days off, and it was Officer D'Horatio, Corporal D'Horatio, Sergeant Kevin Leaf, and Officer Raymond Brady. They're a heck of a job.
Two, two D'Horazios?
Yes. We hired one and then they multiplied.
Wow, that's a good recruiting technique.
Yes, yes, their mother is proud, so...
I have an elegant question to ask, but, you know, I have to ask this. You know, when you sent your troops over there, and when Public Works sent their people, who pays for them?
Well, we fill out two fourteen forms, and FEMA eventually pays us for that. They reimburse the city, but it could take a while.
I mean, not that I would object to the city doing what's right, but, you know, we have a fiscal responsibility.
Right, and we are reimbursed by, when, when it's declared a disaster, emergency, it's, we, we make sure we fill out the paperwork, so...
And, and Lakeport was so great, they actually sent over the forms immediately to us, we have a post-event agreement with them. We have a post-event agreement with them that talks about their responsibility to pay us for this, and so, they'll get money for FEMA, and they'll pay us, and, and they were like, they gave us the paperwork immediately. Okay. Got it. Some more?
So, the mutual aid, just to let you know, they were originally assigned for looting patrol in Lakeport, and one of the teams eventually helped evacuate Kelseyville, so they had to drop the looting patrol. And no, I don't know how many looters they got or, or anything. It's unfortunate that people do that. We received four AEDs. Everybody know what an AED is?
Yeah, the defibrillator?
Yeah, yeah, it's an automatic electronic defibrillator. We, some of us were trained on it, but we received it, Coastal Valley's EMS, who is in charge of policies, et cetera, for fire departments, police departments in Sonoma and parts of Sonoma and Mendocino Counties, received a grant for these AEDs. So, they supplied us with four. We are going to, they're gonna be checked out. Once everybody's trained, and it's very easy training, even a police officer can do it, it won't shock anybody if they have a heartbeat, so that's good. Anyway, once everybody's trained, which should be very quickly, it's gonna be a checkout for each patrol car. We originally were gonna do it for, for each sergeant's vehicle, but we thought everybody should have one who's on patrol. With that, we are gonna start carrying Narcan. We have to be trained in that as well, and we're gonna purchase that. Narcan, for those who don't know, are used for opioid overdoses. And it's, it's, it has saved a lot of lives. So, so every officer's gonna be supplied with that. And one of the, it's complicated, but one of the policy requirements was that we carry AEDs, and we're gonna do Narcan. Although Narcan does no harm if you're not on an opiate overdose.
You know, I, I saw on the evening news one night that in some cases, a police officer is exposed to a drug.
Right.
Inherently. And, and I think there was a case not too long ago where he actually deployed the Narcan on himself, or maybe his partner did.
Right.
So, will your guys, I mean, they'll have it available for themselves in case they need it as well?
Yes. That's one of the reasons we carry all this stuff. We have, some of us who are trained, we have tourniquets, first aid, trauma kits, and it'll include the Narcan. Back on the Traffic Safety Committee meeting, I haven't had one. We talked about it at the staff meeting today, and what I want to do is solicit some input from citizens for problems they are having, or improvements they could see made. We're gonna talk about changing some streets to one ways, et cetera, and, and I have not set that meeting up yet, but I want to get input from the public for some of those things, if they're having problems. That's all I have. You in the front row.
Do you have plans to bring a police dog on board? In the next, in the next year, do you foresee yourself purchasing a dog to assist?
I'm sorry.
A canine?
Yes, and that will be brought to you on August 21st.
22nd.
21st.
21st is the budget. Okay.
Yes, yes, we are, I'm gonna bring a proposal for the, to spend it out of asset forfeiture.
Okay.
And the training is, the next training is in October, so we hope to get it approved.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
And Chris is obviously not here. Is there anything that we should know, an update from him? I mean, we already heard about the fire.
I haven't heard from him. I imagine he's doing something to do with the fires.
I don't imagine so.
We were in the Wall Street Journal this morning, we being Mendocino Lake Complex Fire, was in the Wall Street Journal this morning. I guess it's the largest fire recorded in the state of California.
I think it's in Europe as well. They were reporting in European news sources.
The, the fire is moving northeast. It's moving away from us. And I talked to, I, I went to the, it's called co-operators meeting at the ICP, the command post in Ukiah. I went to several of the meetings, and I asked about Willets and relationship to the fire, and they said the chances of it coming back the other way are, are slim to none. I think I added the none part, but they said it's very slim.
I, yeah. And I've had conversations with Mr. Eckard as well, and he said, there's no chance.
Yeah, they'd have to do, they'd have to burn things that are already burned to do that.
Yeah, and that, and that was even at the very beginning. He was, this is.
The fire has created a large fire rink for us.
It has, actually.
You know, on this, on the fire subject, I just have to say that I, I am struck whenever I, I watch the evening news, and I see coverage of the fires, and the interviews of the fighters, and the, the incident commanders and everything. For most of us laypeople, we look at this thing like it's this real big, scary, rightfully so, situation. But you look at these guys who are professionals, and, and I get the impression that they're, they're attacking this thing like, you know, par in the inference, you know, like a plumber would attack, you know, a particular job, or a carpenter or something. It's a job. They have tools, they have knowledge, they have experience, they have confidence. And I didn't see anybody, any of these firefighters that are right there on the line in front of this monster, looking in any way panicky, or uneasy, or anything like that. It's a job, we gotta get it done. And, and I can't, I can't express how much confidence that gives me, knowing there are people out there like that. And, you know, law enforcement as well, but, I mean, it's really something that we don't get to see a whole lot of, and, and I really appreciate that.
I think some of our volunteers are actually working on the lines as well.
Yeah.
Even though the volunteers are very professional and well-trained.
And the inmates are working as well, right?
Right. Yeah, I thanked a group of them while I was down at the command center.
I know that we get reports from county emergency about three times a day, and the number of resources being deployed, it's between 3,500 and 4,000 people are working on this fire, something over eight, what was it, 65 bulldozers, 500 fire trucks, is just an enormous, enormous effort that is being deployed. It's incredible. So, I, I'm, you know, Willets is doing our part, what we can, and we've asked from the very beginning, how can we help? And our role is, as a supportive role, and we've been doing that, and I'm very proud of Willets for doing that.
Thank you, Chief Warnock. All right, we're moving, is there anything further from Public Works?
Nope.
Or, and code enforcement, I'm sorry. Planning Commission. Planning and code enforcement, sorry.
I actually had a quick, quick engineering, and it'll just take a second. We are looking into that report for putting bricks in the, in the planar strips. Actually, engineering was super excited about it. They think that's a glorious idea, and so, they're putting together, they may have to wait till more things are finished, so they can get the actual square footage, but they thought that was a great idea. They're working on that. Also, we had our bid for Blosser Road today, and it came in really well. We had six bidders on it, which is always nice, and we had a nice, some, some decent bids on that, so we're moving forward, and that's.
When would the work begin on that?
We have to check out the, very soon, very soon, because we got our bids. Once we vet the, the bidders, and actually, we'll, we'll come to you to award the contract that, I doubt, it's not gonna come on the 22nd, it'll probably come in September, that we'd award the bid, and there'll be a notice to proceed shortly thereafter, once they get their insurance and everything together. And our, we have to put our contract together, and it's like about six weeks, I guess.
Have we communicated that with Mark Westerberg? Because I, I mean, anytime there's construction, it's gonna impact school.
Absolutely.
And then, he in turn would need to, to inform the community of potential delays. Mark Westerberg and I, we, we work very closely together, so.
And it looks like Public Works has been trimming the, cutting the grass down on Blosser Lane. They're out there cleaning things up.
Yes, Mark actually asked us to do some work on the trail as well, the pedestrian trail behind Blosser School, and we're doing that as well.
Okay. John?
Thank you. Good evening, Councilmember, person, and, and Mayor. Before I give my department reports, I just want to say that Kathy is instrumental in thanking the people that, that go out and volunteer in helping a crisis. Kathy's always the one that takes the phone calls and gets it done. And so, I, I'd like to acknowledge that she, she's the one at the center of all this stuff all the time, and she never thanks herself. She never takes any credit for it.
Let's, let's all look at her.
Okay, you could, you could beat me later.
She will.
Okay. Not much to talk about with code enforcement, but I'm really proud on the building side of things. If everybody looks to the northwest, they're not gonna see the Willets Cafe.
Great news.
I've, I've issued the first permits for the redevelopment of the Archway property, formerly known as Rimco.
Oh.
It is now rebranded as Archway. And the south side of the building, you're gonna start noticing changes to the south side of the building starting tomorrow. The, the exterior of the building is gonna undergo a major facelift, and the south side of that building is being divided up into leased spaces, and my understanding is that there are already lease tenants lined up for that.
Wow, that's good news. So, none of that requires any condition use permit, because it's zoned for those uses?
Exactly.
And it's just building permits, make sure that it's?
Exactly.
Done properly. What about the access to it? Is it, at this point, just Franklin Street is kind of limited there?
Well, yeah, and, and we're, we're encouraging that, that flow of that access to come from the Franklin Street, and if there's an interplay with Main Street, it's egress only. We're, we're not encouraging people to use the, the Main Street driveway as an access to these units. So, they'll, they'll come in basically the back way.
Yeah.
But, and, and there, there are plans in the works for the remainder of the south side of, of the industrial portion of that building, and I think you're, you're gonna see a, a project proposed to you for the very front of the building, some rezoning and things like that for the front of the building. So, the, the point is, we're coming back out of the hole with that.
That's wonderful.
It's becoming an asset again for the city of Willets.
Yeah, I want to congratulate you, and I guess Dusty, for hanging in there. I know it's been a, a chore to get to this point, and, and I'm happy to see that we're making progress.
We are too.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure. We are too.
You know, it, it's good to, to pound away at the rock and finally see some results.
Good analogy.
That being said, we're about to receive the revised FEMA flood insurance rate maps, and my, I, I haven't had time to go through them in depth, but my initial review of them is they're much closer to the maps we use existing than the previous submission of revisions. The corrections, as far as I'm concerned, it looks like the corrections have been very, very effective in, in bringing the, the area, the, the area that that flood plain expanded back down to something that we recognize. I know when we submitted them before, everybody looked at it, was like, where, how, how did this happen? Well, they, they were right to react that way because it was a result of an error in math that affected the entire map. So, we got, got that straightened out, and it looks like we're gonna have some maps to bring forward here pretty soon. I wanna, I wanna set something up so the public gets a good look at them. I just haven't had time to set that up, but the, the maps are done, and they're ready for us to take a look at. That being said, I've got a lot of activity. Building is up. I think if you, if you notice the numbers on your building activity, building permit activity reports, we're having a banner month, and it's, it's so good that it looks like it's gonna kind of make up for the previous few months. So, activity's back going again, and we're, we're building again. That's a good thing from my perspective. Thank you very much.
Is there any, has there been anything submitted for the, the property sitting right here on the corner of Commercial and Main?
No.
They emptied a lot. Okay, I just want to dispel, there's a rumor, so I just wanna, so there is, there's, there's been nothing submitted for that piece of property?
No, there are long-term plans, but they're not immediate, and they're not, you know, there's no point in publishing them, because they're not, they're not solid.
Is there something going to, to go in where the Willets Cafe was?
No, not right now.
Not right now, okay.
The idea was just to get rid of the ice.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. And Dusty, do you have some of your reports?
20 council meetings down, one more to go. Very briefly, just to remind the council, you'll have the opportunity to approve the housing element update at your next meeting on August 22nd. We'll also have a number of proposed zoning code revisions that were either directed by the previous housing element goals, or by changes in, in state law. And so, we're diligently preparing staff reports to go along with both those items for you for the, for the next meeting. And then, just, we're in discussions with one of our local folks to do a benefit at our skate park. We don't have a date set yet, but staff is happy to work with this individual to, to put on this event, and it would be a fundraiser to put up like a shade structure and some seating at the skate park, which is certainly an amenity that's missing there now. And people are starting to get excited about some music in the park that we're looking to, to start sponsoring on Thursdays, and the general sense I get is that folks in the community are, are ready to party. So, we look forward to, to those. So, that's all I have.
Okay. So, and we already got our Public Works report, so now we're at City Council and Committee Reports. League of Californian Cities.
We'll meet next week on the 17th. It's the 17th? Next week, probably, the 17th.
Yeah, I saw that.
In Eureka, and I'll be in attendance, and I think Sarah sent some stuff out, but I didn't think it'd be time to be up for us to do anything with, so.
So, you're gonna miss the ribbon cutting on the EV chargers. Okay. MCA would be normally very busy. He's not here. So, moving on, EDFC has a meeting tomorrow at 2:00, and it is at 175 East Church Street in Ukiah, and they're talking about loan guidelines and budgets, and lots of bookkeeping and getting, getting sort of loose ends tied up, old business items. So, anyone who's interested in more information about that, 2:00 tomorrow, or, or talk to me. Solid Waste met a week or two ago. I don't have the date in front of me. And I believe our next meeting isn't until early September, but we did already approve the rate changes for SWO, so that was an important item. Moving on, Mendocino Transit Authority, something?
Nope. MTA meets in two weeks at 1:30 at the Ukiah Conference Center, and it's open to the public.
Lafco?
Lafco met on Monday in Ukiah, and we reviewed, I guess we, Lafco's required now to prepare a report on mutual water company, I guess, report. There's a lot of little private water companies in the county, and apparently, it's one of those, we call it an unfunded mandate, because they're required by some state law to prepare this report, but at this point, it's kind of like there's no teeth, as far as some of the folks chose not to report, so that's how the report went. We reviewed an amendment with the legal, I guess, our lawyer, his contract, and also with the executive officer's contract as we go into the budget. And then, I was selected as the local delegate to Cal Lafco, and I'll be attending that in October. And we reviewed our work plan. The next meeting's September 10th. There was some discussion also on some, you know, sometimes they set a work plan, you know, these are these projects we have. Amongst them is our sphere of influence, and sometimes things drag on, and then, the debate was, from some of the other folks, was, is this a Willets? For example, in Willets cases, is it us delaying or not, and who should bear the cost? Because all of that adds cost, and it's on different projects. You know, you could say we're gonna do X number of things next year, but they have a tendency to drag on. You know, you could say we're gonna do X number of things next year, but they have a tendency to drag on. Sometimes because the information doesn't come back, or the applicants aren't timely, or there are different reasons for the delay. So, there was talk of in the future maybe having some sort of timeline so that when the applications come in. I guess the cities and pay a lot more into Lafco than maybe some of the small districts. And so, we're already paying, so I guess the debate was, are we paying enough to cover when we do these things? And there's a delay, or versus maybe a cemetery district that has, you know, not even a full board, and when they don't come back with information. So, that was that debate. So, it may come back to Lafco as far as setting some sort of penalty for not getting information.
So, what, what is the schedule for the Willis sphere of influence?
I think, and maybe Dusty, you, you, I guess the contractor's finished, I guess, and he's sent the information?
Yeah, we, we were very anxious to provide the information to the contractor, and did so. And that was already a handful of months ago. And so, for now, we're just anxiously awaiting the report from Lafco. And we were told a couple of months ago that it was scheduled, so I don't have an update.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get the report from the contractor, the city will, with an opportunity for the city hopefully to make any sort of changes or mark it up and say, this is correct or not correct, or to pass on it, so that we can.
So, the ball is in their court, and we are anxiously awaiting the.
I'll, I'll reach out to the director and see if there's any updates.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, I think we all are eager to have that move on.
Absolutely.
Go ahead. Finance Committee isn't meeting, because the whole council has been in a mixed state.
Yes.
And so, water and wastewater, that would be very.
And they, so.
Okay. Revive Ed met recently, and so.
We reported at the last meeting.
Okay, that was already, it's time for two weeks, man. Happens fast. Ad hoc committee, Caltrans met Monday. Do you wanna report on that?
Um, all we can really say is that the work is going, progressing quickly, and we're very happy about that. I'm not sure what else we can really say. Some things were actually, they, they're doing a good job, and they're moving forward, and.
And they also, yeah, they're, yes. They've also begun work in earnest on the Sherwood Road project, that part of it. And at my understanding was that that's gonna be pretty much no traffic control issues during the day, starting in another couple of weeks.
Right, right.
But right now, they're doing it at night, and having to have temporary, you know, ten to fifteen minute closures. But they're gonna be able to do all the rest of it without traffic controls.
And, yeah, exactly, and I think that'll be much nicer. I, I know one issue that did come up is, in the future, they, they were thinking, gosh, if we've, if we do one, one of our projects before the other, maybe we can piecemeal the relinquishment. And staff has talked about that, and, and we would not be in favor of that. We would like to just do it in one fell swoop because of warranty issues and, and the wear and tear of trucks on the, on the road doing the Sherwood Road project if the, if our Main Street project isn't completed yet. So, we would like to wait, so that the, any liability issues, wait until it's all done. So, we'll see how they, they like that idea, but that is really our preference.
And was there another tree issue, or?
There was another tree issue. We had two trees that were sort of up for discussion. One of them, we said, in front of the stamp shop, it said looked good, they were able to remove the concrete, and they gave it a thumbs up. The second tree, I read the arborist report, and it was, and they included a lot of pictures, and it did not, it was not able to be saved. It was, they had big scars on the sides of both trees, and it had turned yellow. And it, the, the recommendation that that tree was actually a risk, the arborist, and should be taken down. As a city, when we have notified of risks, that risks to the public, we have to act accordingly. And it did not, it was yellow, and.
That was the one near Buster's, right? Near Buster's.
Dusty, it was near Buster's. And, and staff read the arborist report, and we all came to the conclusion that we really couldn't, from a liability standpoint.
Okay, the, you know, the reports that we've been getting from citizens, that Caltrans citizens have been getting, is that they've been very, the contractor's been very, very respectful of private property access and so forth, and really worked one-on-one with virtually all of the businesses. They didn't just, you know, come in and do it, they talked to everybody first, and that, that the people have been pretty impressed with the care that's been taken, so. And they're moving fast, which is great, too. Okay, Meyer District, JPA.
Hasn't met.
Okay, and similarly, the JPA for the wastewater treatment has not met, and I guess there's no news. Willis Tourism Board?
Yes, the Visit Willis Tourism Board has taken on several projects for our first year. And as I mentioned before, the biggest project that we have for two thousand eighteen is the Wild Willets Fest on October twentieth. And it's about running a health, it's about gathering as a community and a taste of Willets. We're really, really pleased, we're meeting every two weeks, and every time we meet, we're seeing a large groups of people that are coming in from the community to get involved in this project, which really goes to show that it's something that is wanted and valued in our community. So, I'm really excited to see how it all comes together. I invite you to come to our meeting. Next meeting is next Wednesday from four to five-thirty, right here in the council chambers, and it is open to the public.
Great. Okay, council member, I, I had a couple of things I wanted to do on council member reports. I forgot to mention that if anybody out there in the public doesn't know about these, we have a series of five pamphlets from Mendo Recycle, which is our solid waste management authority, about how to deal with hazardous waste, pharmaceuticals, sharps, recycling, and compostables. And there, these pamphlets are here at the city. And the city also has, both the planning department and at the, the city office, this nice guide to water conservation, which talks about all different kinds of water conservation, bathroom, kitchen, garden, laundry, et cetera. So, anybody who is concerned about not only saving money on their water bill, but saving water, that's a really good one. And I also wanted to mention that Willets Economic Localization has a committee that is also kind of along the same lines as Visit Willets, talking about painting the town. And there are at least four or five projects, all of which are pretty low-cost, easy, volunteer-led, that include painting fire hydrants, painting trash receptacles, painting the K-Rail concrete bunkers along the, the border of the empty lot over there. And also individual businesses improving their storefronts. And at some point relatively soon, the, the theater is going to be repeating the whole, the Loyola Theater. And that's gonna be a big contribution to painting our town. So, things are happening on that score, if anyone wants to get involved, talk to me. Other council members have any reports or recommendations?
I do.
Are you?
On August twenty-fifth, it says Saturday at nine AM, we'll be kicking off the Willets use soccer season. Usually have about a thousand locals that come out for the event. And at that event, we'll be doing, we'll have a presentation where we will be honoring our local fire department. So, if any of you could come out, that would be wonderful.
What's the date?
October, I'm sorry, August twenty-fifth, at, it starts at nine AM. It's a Saturday.
So many things are scheduled for the weekend that my niece is getting married.
And then the second item I feel is important to share, because I've heard from many people in the community. After the October fires, we talked a lot about communicating with the public and letting people know what our preparedness plan was. And then the conversation got a little lost. And I know that city staff is working on a plan, but what I'm looking for is a, a plan to share what our strategy is in the event of something like Lakeport happening here. And so, I just think that this council needs to take some time to figure out what our plan is here and be able to communicate it with the public. Not that we don't have a plan, but that we need to, to better communicate it with the, with the citizens of our community.
And I think that that's a great idea, and I think the chief and I have, we've actually had several conversations with the county. And I think one of the things that we would like to maybe convey to people is talk about roles, and the different roles. Because, and I think that that's something that, 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 you're right, that the population needs to know whose role is to do what. And we've been talking a lot about this, and we, we cooperate very closely with the county. And although we know what we're doing, and we know what the county's doing, and maybe the public doesn't know whose role is what. And so, that is something that the, we sort of assume people know. In the case of an emergency, basically, the county is in charge. The county emergency services, if there is any sort of evacuation order, anything like that, you will know, because the county will go door-to-door, they do reverse nine-one-one. The city's role is a different role, and we have talked about those roles. But to the extent that we can sort of communicate to that public, if they're like, oh, my gosh, we don't know who's in charge, we need to make sure that the public knows that, and I think that's a great point. And so, and I, and we also.
And hopefully, soon, the emergency operations plan will be completed, and that will be made a public document on our website.
I think it's important to recognize that in the pre, in the fall, although it's the county's responsibility, we were cut off from the county. And we had to survive on our own. And it was a little chaotic trying to figure things out in, in October. And so, people wanna know that should we be cut off from the county again, what is our local, what is our back, what is our backup plan?
That's all addressed in the EOC.
Okay.
Great. I, I really agree with that comment. I think we need to communicate that better with our public, so that people.
And also to let you know, we've been in contact with the CERT coordinator, who's also the ham radio guy. And we're, we're, that'll also be on August twenty-first for the budget for asset forfeiture, we're gonna install a ham radio at the EOC, at the police department, our adjacent to it. So, we, we've looked at tons of stuff, and we've talked, I've been talking to the consultants about several different things, and we're getting this wired.
Sounds like work is happening, we just wanna make sure it's getting communicated.
Absolutely. And, and you know what, you know, all, and, you know, a lot of people don't realize this, but all of our staff are, we are emergency responders. So, in the case of an emergency, everybody comes to City Hall. I mean, everybody knows that, they're instructed that. Even the little skirmish we had near Brook Trails, I mean, there's several of us who like, went, came to City Hall and listened to the scanner. And so, that is sort of ingrained in us. And, and the public probably doesn't know that, but we, you know, John came to my house first, he went to my house, make sure. But I was already at City Hall. So, you know, the public doesn't know that, but we are.
The public is just reflecting back on what happened in October.
Yes.
Two thousand seventeen. And, and, and how they were, were or weren't able to communicate, and what they did or didn't know. And so, wanting to know ahead of time, if this happens, what is the plan?
You know, and, and a good point was brought out is, you know, where is the, or if we were to need an evacuation center, we have two. It's our community center and the high school. But really, the high school is the better location, and it, and we defer to the high school because they have supplies. So, that's another good thing to put out to the public, the, the official evacuation center is the high school. And, and so, and that's, and I think Councilmember Orsi had asked me that, and that's a good question. And so, that's, that's really the answer, because we have very limited resources in City Hall, but people will come here first. And so, it would be directing people to the high school.
Okay, so I didn't hear any other reports from council members, so we are now, are Good and Welfare.
Actually, under Good and Welfare, on the twenty-fifth is also the Education Foundation Summer Gala. And I guess I almost wanna, I guess it was in the papers, Scott, but, but our SRO, I guess somebody told me I was gone last week, so our SRO was.
I'm, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Our SRO, you announced it to the paper this past week, I guess?
Well, the paper called me.
Yeah. So, so that it was Curtis Labus, and so.
Right, but he's, again, based on you guys have the agenda item, he's not gonna go right away. He is gonna be allowed to go part-time and, and until we, we tire it off, or if necessary.
And the Education Foundation is in the evening, Jerry, so you can attend them.
All right. So, I believe we have completed our agenda except for the closed session. So, we are gonna go into closed session, conference regarding anticipated litigation. But you have a.
No.
No, okay.
Too early.
If there's anything to report, I'll.